I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, December 2, 2025. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Crystal Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. The reason Commissioner Robinson is down there is because he's going to be Reverend Warren Robinson and open us with the invocation and then the pledge led by Commissioner Tapley.
Still haven't thought of what down on us and had much. We know that we need it. In this trying time, Lord, where we go to visit family for holidays, we need to remember there are some people who don't have families. While we have bounty and we have blessings and we have comfort, there are those who don't have those comforts. Bless us to be patient. Bless us to be thankful. Now, Lord, give us special blessing for those who have to navigate the laws, the proposals, the plans, and the policies of the city. Give us your wisdom. Give us your strength. Give us your insight. Lord, if you do that, we know that we will be all right. And we give you blessings in advance. This we pray in this son of the name.
Please follow me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We are going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please? The motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to public comment. I don't have anybody signed up for public comment. And with that, we can move on to city manager's report, but the city manager can't talk, so I understand we're going to pass that up as well. Please. And we'll move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. I'll go ahead and start. We had the ribbon cutting for Alamo Gordo Main Street on Saturday night. It was phenomenal. I thought it was a great success. And it's exciting. It's exciting to see it open. It was, the business owners are very enthusiastic. They're really excited about it. And they did a great job downtown. So if you haven't been downtown, I encourage you to go. It looks like New York Avenue was opened up and cars are parked down there. So maybe the social media posts will stop now. We'll see. Probably not, but, you know, we can all hope, right? And then I also attended, one of our employees died, Sam, and I actually attended his memorial on Saturday morning. And it was, it was actually kind of cool. I mean, I know it was a memorial, but it was kind of cool. And I can't complain because he was a Lynyrd Skynyrd fan, and that is like my all-time favorite band, so can't complain about that one. And then I wanted to quash a rumor because I heard it again the other day, and quite frankly, I'm getting tired of hearing it. Just so we're on the record, the mayor has no desire, no intention, no plan, not even a thought of being the city manager of this city. You would have to like, I think I'd rather donate a kidney, to be honest with you, or, or have a third eye or something. And so, but it's getting a little old. So just, just so we're clear on the record, I've never even entertained that thought. Never, in a million years, would I be the city manager for the city of Alamo Gordo. I think it takes a braver person than me. So, but I wanted to clear that up on the record in case I hadn't yet, because even one of my board members heard it the other day. My board members were loving, loving the job that I actually have. Even they heard it the other day and, and mentioned that they had heard it. And quite frankly, I think it's a little insensitive that people are putting that out there, because that's my personal life and it affects me. But whatever, I guess it comes with the job, just like everything else. But I did want to clear that up. I have no, 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 no. You couldn't pay me enough. I'm sorry. And then, other than that, I think that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything?
I just have one thing. The hole in the floor, on Florida, in front of the school. Do you know the timeline on that? Okay.
Sorry. I know the timeline on Commissioner Reardon's is next week on Florida, but I didn't check on the timeline on that one.
Could you add one to the list, too? You don't need to respond or anything, but it's on.
Don't talk.
Yeah. Talk a little louder, I can't hear. But on Florida, going, it's on South Florida, right before you get to Mimosa, before, between Mimosa and whatever the next street back is, there's one, it's, it's pretty big. I hit it the other night going down there, so. Somewhere right there in that area, that stretch. I don't know what that next street back is, so.
Just to clarify, past Mimosa?
No, before, before Mimosa, to the, it'd be to the north of Mimosa, but to the south of whatever that next street is. I'm not sure what that is. You'll see it. You won't miss it. And it's in the southbound lane, so. No, sir. No, it, it looks like from that last rainstorm, it just popped a, a big old pothole. And so, almost blew a tire out on it the other night, so. Follow up. Okay, thank you.
That it?
That's all I had, sorry.
Anybody else? Okay. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to pull off the consent agenda?
We're pulling two and seven.
Two and seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Since it's your second to last meeting, can we pull item one and read the entire thing to everybody?
Say that again.
Since it's your second to last meeting, can we pull item one and have you read the entire thing to us?
No.
Okay.
Nobody's got time for that. Okay. Commissioner Robinson needs to get home. He doesn't have time for that. We're going to go with that. All right. With that, do I have a motion to approve item one, three, four, five, and six on the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Let Commissioner Guthrie do it.
Second. You're like one in the same anyway, so. All right. A motion, I mean, a second from Commissioner Guthrie, and the vote is up.
Mayor Pro Tem McDonald.
I just finished.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes seven zero. Move on to items pulled from the consent agenda, item two. Jimmy, you're up.
I just was wondering with the fiscal impact of that, what the bid was on it. It doesn't give us numbers.
I'm sorry.
It just gave you on item two, just what the, what the bid actually came in at. It didn't give us in our bid, our documents, it just gave us the scoring sheet.
The actual bid, the amount?
Yeah.
It was around $400,000?
$400,000, and that's to do everything in town, or?
Yeah, that's going to be just maintenance for all the ditches.
Okay. And that's per year, or is that one go round?
One year.
That's a full year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. And it's around $400,000?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Did we have any other responsive bidders?
No.
Just the one?
Just one bidder. Well, actually, the two. The one with the, the brush mountain control and KNG. They're the only two.
What did theirs come in at, the other one?
The other one, I didn't, I didn't, I'm not sure on that one. That one is going to be more for weed abatement in spring. It's not, he doesn't do maintenance, more just weed abatement and stuff like that.
Okay.
And he was the only bidder.
Okay. So the white mountain brush is, because we have two bids here on ours, but it doesn't tell us any dollar amounts. It just gives us your score sheet.
So let me clarify on that, on how that was procured. So this is a on-call contract, so it'll be on a task order basis.
Okay.
So the money that he has for these two contractors to do task orders is $400,000.
Okay, so he upped to $400,000.
Correct. And they submitted their, their cost sheets and how much for their, for what they're doing. So once Jimmy and Eddie and his team develop, you know, you're going to work on these five ditches, or you're going to go spray these five areas, then they'll be providing those scopes of work and the cost of scopes work based on the pricing that they provided in the RFP.
Okay.
So they did not actually provide prices for every ditch.
I get you. So it wasn't a competitive bid? It was just a?
It was a.
Like an RFQ, almost, essentially?
It was, it was competitive. If there had been people who, you know, didn't meet, but these were the only two that responded. But they're both very qualified and, and can do this work.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't, just didn't have any numbers in here in either of the documents, so I just was curious.
So that is, that is the budget that he has, is the $400,000. And so that's something that we'll revisit. This is, you know, a new adventure for us. So we'll see if $400,000 is adequate for an annual program, or if it has to be adjusted up or down.
Okay. Thank you.
I figured it had to be something like that, because that was weird, that we didn't have numbers. We normally do, so. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item two?
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who was that?
Tapley.
Second from Commissioner Tapley. Can we put up the vote, please? Wait, I'm in the wrong place. And motion passes seven zero. And we'll move on to item seven. You're up.
I'm up.
You're up.
Provided you guys everything.
I just, I just asked, I just wanted to ask if this was capital outlay money, or is this money that we moved?
It's a, it's a grant.
Is it, it is a grant?
Yes.
Okay. How much, what do we have left besides the duck pond over there?
For the zoo, or for the grant?
For the zoo.
So right now, we have a sewer and storm drain project that's outside of the zoo, on the south side, that would cover the storm drain from White Sands to the tracks, and then sewer from the zoo to 10th Street. That's one project. The next project will be designed for bear enclosure. Right now, sometime this week, we'll have a contractor going out checking the sewer and everything inside the zoo. And that would kind of determine on where we're at with the whole bathroom situation and seeing if it's possible to tie in, or the sewer has to be replaced, so.
Okay. And then what about the netting?
And we do have 100% design on irrigation.
The irrigation. What about the netting for the?
That's this one.
That's this one?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I can barely.
Oh, no, you're good.
Read this.
Yeah, this one is the netting for the a bear. Like, it's a, it's like a gate that goes on that walkway bridge right there, the duck pond?
Right.
To divide the pond in half, and then a different drain that will connect into that sewer manhole that's in the parking lot on the south side of the zoo, going from a four-inch to a six-inch, and then, of course, a newer drain, so, you know, drain a lot better than a four-inch, so.
Right, right.
It's all this ledge.
And is the netting for the enclosure, is it the whole pond, or is it just?
No, it's.
Just the north end of the pond?
It's that north end of the pond, that little.
The half moon part of, okay.
Any other questions?
Anybody else have questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item seven?
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to public hearings. Item eight, consider and act upon the question of whether or not the alcohol beverage control division of the state of New Mexico should grant the applicant pizza patio, a restaurant, a restaurant A beer and wine license, liquor license with on-premises consumption and patio service, and that's located on First Street. Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
Are they just adding a liquor license?
Yes. So, yes, Madam Mayor, Commission, this public hearing is for an alcohol license, which Mr. Richard Norwell already has at Pizza Patio. However, he was just wanting to add LLC. The Alcohol and Beverage Control Division requires him to begin from scratch. This is all it is.
That's your tax dollars at work.
He has changed nothing. So he is present in case you want to ask any questions, but it's just as simple as that.
Frizell's shaking his head, because he's like, we don't have these problems on the reservation line. Only with the state of New Mexico. You have a little sympathy for us now, right? Yeah. All right. Sorry.
I'll just make a motion to approve item eight.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon to approve item eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Guthrie. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to item nine, consider and act upon the question of whether the alcohol beverage control division of the state of Mexico should approve or disapprove the issuance of a restaurant B beer and wine spirits, this is so dumb, spirits liquor license on premises consumption only with no patio service located at 902 New York Avenue to OMG Alamo LLC, doing business as Oppenheimer Gast House. That's all I got. Does anybody have any questions? The owner here? Is that you? I'm very excited.
I'm going to be there this Saturday again, and we're going to have sausages in Blue Wine and Lake Como again.
Oh, man. I'm just going to have to walk on into that one. All right.
So, and Madam Mayor, Commissioners, just to clarify, this is a new?
Yes.
Alcohol license for restaurants, the B type.
And how can you say no to that? Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve item nine?
So moved.
Motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Guthrie. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven zero. Okay.
I just want to say thank you.
Oh, okay.
I talked to the vendors today on the beer weekend and shipping.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
A beer's name?
What do you say to that? Like, I need to let her, she's opening a German restaurant. How come you just, anyway, okay. All righty, here we go. We're moving on to new business. Item 10, consider and act upon the naming of the nadatorium. Hello. I haven't seen you in a hot minute. How you doing?
Keep my head down and try to do stuff.
You what?
Say, keep my head down and try to do stuff.
I know, right? You're the smart one, I'm telling you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. So we did the polls and put it out for the vote for the public, and you should have gotten in your packet the top 10 name choices as chosen by the public. And so now it's your turn to vote on what your favorite one is, which, which one of these names you guys would like to have. So I'm not sure how you guys want to do that, but the, the public's top choice at 44% of our voters was Cactus Cove.
This sounds like a bar that I visited sometime.
Cactus Cove?
Cactus Cove, yeah.
Sounds like a restaurant or something.
Definitely a bar name.
The, the second one was, at, at 13%, was Alamo Gordo Aquatic Center.
I like that one. I do, too.
The next one was Desert Oasis Aquatic Center, and then Alamo Splash, Rocket City Nadatorium, Otero Swimming Indoor Space with the acronym Oasis, Alamo, Alamo Aquatic Center, The Oasis, Zia Aquatic Center, and Alamo Aquatics.
Alamo Gordo Aquatic Center. I like Alamo Gordo Aquatics.
Is this an action matter that we actually voted on tonight?
You could put, we're, we're trying to get the name so that, for the, the people who are doing the fabric for the building can start getting that into their plans for...
So you need a motion to pick a name, and then?
Yeah, it's consider and act upon.
So, so I make a motion to accept Alamo Gordo Aquatic Center? Is that, is that your motion? I second it.
Okay. So I have a motion from Commissioner Tapley to name the new nadatorium, Alamo Gordo Aquatic Center. I have a second from Commissioner Robinson. Should we put up the vote?
Sure.
This way, Bindy can go back to put his head down and get things done.
And motion passes seven zero. And we're going to move on to item 11, consider and act upon the approval of bowling lane upgrades at the Fund Center. It doesn't sound like, but anyway. And direct staff to identify or pursue funding options. We do have, are you both going to get up?
Yes.
Okay, Johnny Adams, general manager, and Frizell, Frizell Junior Chief Operating Officer, and Stephanie, who can't talk. Got it.
What is this for?
It's like the sign, like it does.
Hi there.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. Good to see you guys. You know, it's funny, I was just at Pizza Patio with my wife on Saturday evening, and the poor girl there was apologizing to everybody about not being able to serve beer, so thank you for proving that.
I'll just say on the record, it's the dumbest thing I've ever heard. And I've heard some pretty dumb things, so.
Well, after what we had to go through to get your license back on track over at the Fund Center.
I feel like it's just a way to get more money, right?
Exactly. So, you know, just to reintroduce myself, my name is Frizell Junior. I'm Chief Operating Officer for Inn of the Mon gods Resort and Casino, the Tribe's Gaming and Hospitality Enterprises, meaning Casino Apache as well, and Ski Apache, and as well as now the management contract for Rocket City. So, just a brief update, Mr. Adams here is going to go through kind of what we're here, here about, but it just, you know, I can't believe it's been almost four months now since we've reopened the Fund Center back in August. So, you know, it's been, it's been rather interesting and fun. It's been, it's been rewarding. You know, we've handed over a few revenue sharing checks over to Ms. Hernandez, so I'm, I'm hoping you guys are pleased with that, and that things have been going well. It hasn't been without its challenges with, with some of the, you know, some staffing challenges here and there, trying to make sure getting people up to par with, with hospitality services and how we want things done. We went through different hospitality trainings and trying to get people up and going. We've overstaffed a bit to where we want to, we want to see people to, being able to come up to standards, so. And that's, that's typical whenever you open up a business. You want to overstaff to make sure that we're in place. So, you know, we want to make sure that this business gets profitable within a certain amount of time. We don't expect it to be profitable right out, right out the bat, but getting, getting to that, that portion there. You know, our biggest challenges, though, have been these old pin, pinsetter machines, and Johnny will explain that in a second, what kind of struggles they've been having with that. But otherwise, it's been, it's been really fun, and it's been rewarding. And I think the team has been growing and getting, being able to service the community and a lot of the new things we've been able to bring to the Fund Center and, and having a good time. So, but we are, we are been able to purchase a new laser tack system as well, that we've, we purchased out of our own budget there and that we've, we're installing, and we're, we're getting that up and running here in a few days, and Johnny can give an update on that as well. And we'll be rolling out a new menu here right before Christmas, so if you guys haven't been there to eat anytime soon, maybe wait until after the 19th. Well, it'll be, be keeping the same favorites that we have on there, but we'll be taking off some of the stuff that hasn't been selling well and putting on some new items and updating the cocktail menu that we have there and changing out some of the beers that aren't selling well and putting some new, new items on the menu there. So, always some new things. We've been experimenting with some karaoke nights in some of the, in the back rooms there, doing some DJs. We've added some pool tables, getting some new arcade games switched out here and there, experimenting with some retail items there. But I don't want to steal all of Johnny's thunder, but we've.
Too late.
We've been doing a lot of good things, and we've had a fun fall, but I'm really excited about getting into next spring, hoping that we can get your approval to get these new changes done, because it'll be a big difference to get new business in for this Fund Center and, and taking business away from other parts of the state. Not that we want to be bad partners for other parts of the state, but getting in new business, getting in new, new people from around the state, and, you know, helping other businesses within the town. So, meaning other hotels and other restaurants and other areas, seeing, seeing new people coming in through tournaments and whatnot. So, that's what we're hoping for. You have a really beautiful, big bowling alley, and you, we can see a lot of new things coming through if we're able to get, not having to make so many repairs all the time. And there's, there's no longer any parts available out there, so.
Have people constantly, yeah.
Yeah. So with that, if you don't have any questions for me, I'll turn it over to Johnny, and he can.
I went out and had a hamburger with my daughter, and I was very impressed. But we need more people in there. Do you, you got a marketing plan you're going to share with us in the next month or so?
Yeah, so we'll be, we'll be changing things up. We got to, we got to get. Yeah, so we'll be, we'll be changing things up, we gotta, we gotta get more regional people in there, you know, it, we can't just rely on what's in town here. You know, there's a lot of people that, that live in Alamo Gordo, but we gotta get more people that are passing through, that are either coming up to Ruidoso, or, or coming up from other areas that we can, we can push, you know, we have a big social media following that, that we're growing, but we gotta get more people from out of town. You're correct, so on that, so. We, we, we have a pretty good marketing push that we can, that we can share with you guys, and we can actually email that out to, to Stephanie, and she can share it with you guys.
On your menu, are you guys gonna keep the carnita fries?
Yes, sir. Those will stay on the menu for you.
Those things are amazing, if you all, you all oughta try them.
All right.
And, and just one, one question from the, the mute city ma, city manager, will the fry bread be staying?
Yes.
Excellent.
Fry bread will be staying, absolutely.
This corner is satisfied.
You should've said, do we get new pin setters?
Good evening. Any questions?
So, no, but I did, Commissioner McDonald, or Mayor Pro Tem McDonald, asked me earlier about, or made the comment that, because it says the existing lanes are thirty years old, so I wanted to clarify that when the facility was built, it was built using, using lanes, so they were not, they did not put new lanes in there, they were used from somewhere else, I can't tell you where, but I remember this, because it was kind of a little bit controversial, but they did not have the money to, to buy new lanes, and I think some, they went back and forth, but, so, to answer the question, they really are about thirty years old because they were used. I mean, the facility itself is eight years old, nine years old, something like that, almost nine years old, and they were quite dated back then, so. For anybody that's watching and says, how can they be thirty years old, it's because they were not new when they were installed to begin with, so.
That is our biggest obstacle right now, is that they are old, and that finding parts for them seems to be the hardest portion of it. The downtime we have with that seems to hurt us a little bit more, trying to have our busy Saturday nights, our Friday nights, when we're down a few lanes, just because of unable to find parts. Getting them here, working with the right vendors, and making sure that we're set up, so.
Just, just for the record, how many lanes are in operation?
Right now, I have twenty lanes operational, but it's a day-to-day basis, I'm making sure that we have just the right, the inch and a quarter, or a quarter inches off, to just make sure that they stay operational. So it focuses on me holding up at least three to four technicians in there also, to make sure that, that we stay operational, sometimes we run down to seven. We get down, seven lanes get knocked down for the, for the night. As of right now, when I left, as we, today is our league night, we had twenty lanes operational to be able to move, and we do end up with fourteen teams right now in a constant, showing up for leagues, so we're, we're moving in the right direction, we just are asking for a little more help as the, if we can get the proper equipment, we'll be able to hold a lot more league nights and a lot more community events.
And there was a PowerPoint, I don't know if everybody checked, okay, good, good, yeah.
Are you all looking at replacing the lanes, or just the pin setters?
The pin setters themselves is what we're looking at replacing, the lanes are actually in very good shape. There might be a little bit of modifications that need to be done to the lanes, but we are sitting at an eighty, eighty-two percent, I believe, if I remember correctly. Eighty-two percent is the rating that we got, so it is a silver rating, which eventually we would like to get to a gold, but our biggest issue right now is, is the pin setters themselves.
I think that's, and the mayor's comment, I think the pin setters was the refurbished equipment.
Yeah.
The lanes themselves is actually were new.
Yeah, the lanes are, the lanes themselves are fine, it's
It's the pin setters themselves.
The equipment, yeah.
The equipment that we use to make sure that we can bowl, have all the pins, that is the equipment that we are talking about right now.
And, and just to clarify, there, it's not only the pin setters, but also the scoring system as well, correct?
With that, the scoring system comes with the exact vendor. The vendors use the scoring system that they build, so it's not, it's not compatible with anything else. As of right now, we are compatible with the scoring systems, if we keep these pin setters, but these pin setters, like you said, like the mayor suggested, that they are thirty years old, the finding the parts is a big challenge that we're running into. So the scoring system would have to go with the vendor that we choose.
But the estimate for that is?
The estimate for that, on the pin setters that we have, now going with, if you go with Cubica, their total is five hundred and eighty, five thousand two hundred and seventy-three and forty-four cents, that's everything included, and that will be complete remodel, a complete takeout, removal, removal of the pin setters, and put a brand-new scoring system in, which is actually a very cool system.
How much downtime is that create for you guys?
Cubica has come back with a downtime of us being down three weeks. But they won't start any, any work until mid, mid-January. So, first, first deposit, if they get the first deposit, that's when it starts, as soon as that starts, we move forward with it to get the pin setters in, pin setters in, and if we were to, if we were to go with Cubica, they've assured me a February first start.
And that's the one you wanna go with?
That is the one I recommend.
Okay.
That, that's the one that will last long, it's just the top-of-line product, everything else is, and it's, they've been giving us the best, they've even been working on US bowling's equipment.
Yeah. So, it, it, coming with the vendors, it comes with the challenge.
If we figure this out, and it's a go, are you gonna give people plenty of warning that the lanes will be down for three weeks?
Yeah, absolutely, there'll be, there'll be that warning, that we will be down with lanes for at least three weeks, maybe the max. But we will move forward with it and have a greater experience for it, we'll be able to have twenty-four lanes open to give these community members and anybody that wants to come, come back, and it'll give us the opportunity as a community to bring in the bit, the large tournaments that will bring in.
I was just gonna say, didn't you, aren't you trying to host a large tournament, or?
Yeah, I have actually put in three bids to host three state tournaments for 2027. The catch on that is, of course, I need to have the twenty-four lanes operational. I have that belief that we can reach that gold, but with the new equipment, it'll be one hundred percent ready-to-go, USBC will take it on, we'll move forward with it. We're talking a hundred and fifty participants, two different times, and you're looking at revenue for hotels, restaurants around the area, the whole weekend. And it's a three, it's a three-week process for these state tournaments.
And there's a, there's a hotel right there, so.
There's a hotel right there, we got a lot downtown, over there by Chili's, and I mean, the more that we can fill those up, we'll be ready to go. That's just more, more profit for the whole area.
Did you consider their family coming with them, and?
Yes, because actually, you know, learning this a little bit more and going through it, bowling is a big spectator sport. Families like to sit back, like to sit back and watch, like to kick, go and cheer them on, so it is...
Listen, I'd rather watch that than tennis, don't shoot me for that one, I'm sorry, anyway.
Will there have to be any modification for people to sit there, there's not a lot of spectator here either. We're, we're moving forward with that, we're doing the best we can to initiate the plan on putting more seating so that we're able to watch. We have put some tables in there to see if it'll work, there are some more upgrades that we can make to possibly make it a better seating for family members to watch. Now, besides putting stadium seating in there, it's gonna be a little tough to watch anyway, but fire codes won't allow me to do that.
We can get a one-time permit for a state tournament to add stadium seating, I'm sure. But if you've been in there lately, you've seen that we've added a ti, a table per lane, to add a single lane.
So, so we've ended up with an extra four seats per, per lane, minimum. Thank you.
Hey, Frizell, I don't know if this will be for, you probably know what I'm gonna ask, up in Ruidoso, they changed the lanes to, to string setters, have, have you rolled on those lanes?
Yeah, yes, sir, actually, I, I was in the league there all summer when they first switched out, and they actually went with the Cubica product there, and it's, it's an amazing system, so.
That's what I was gonna ask, which one?
And it rolls just like regular, regular pins, because, you know, a lot of the league bowlers were skeptical about going on the string pins, then once they started using them, they were, they were fine with it, nobody had any complaints, because they played just normal. And some of them were actually happier, because they felt like they played a little bit better, but they didn't, they just, they, they were just, they just felt that way, but it was, it's really normal, it's a really slick system, and it's really low maintenance, and that was the best thing for the operators, people that owned the bowling alley, and the manager there, they were like, this is the best thing, because it just, their maintenance costs went, went down to nothing, and the, the service from Cubica was, was amazing, and, and the bowlers were happy, so.
So you felt like, you know, when you were bowling, that the breakdowns were very minimal, and?
There, there was virtually none, the, what they, you know, when you were bowling three games for a league night, you maybe had two tangle-ups on your, on your things the whole night, and the guy went, the one guy went back there, and he untangled them, took him ten seconds. Whereas right now, on our, on your twenty-four lanes, you have ten people back there, and they're constantly...
You should see it back there, it's crazy, they, like, stand on them, it's crazy, I'm like, I can't believe you have to do all this.
Well, and it's rather dangerous too, you, you could lose limbs, you could lose fingers, you know, it's, that's the biggest workman's comp nightmare that we have right now, is, is people getting hurt in those pin setters.
Yeah, because they literally walk up and down these lanes all night long.
So the safety measures on the new pin setters are, we worry about almost nothing, the new pin setters have a very low voltage. I mean, you lose electricity, that's about the only reason that these will be down at all.
So, do these not use a conventional pin, the, these new ones?
Those use a specific, let me see, it's a specific pin because of the drilling that we have to do into it, to make sure that it stays within the string.
Okay, so it's still an actual pin, though?
It is still an actual pin, yes.
Okay, it sounded like there was just something hanging down, it, it...
It'll set it down perfectly.
Okay. Are there any, you said these are the top-of-line, but like these, the US Bowling or the Brunswick's version of it, are they all fairly comparable, or?
They're fairly comparable. US Bowling, of course, that we use their, their scoring system right now, unfortunately, with their scoring system, we'll never be able to own that type of software. They'll never allow us to own it, so there'll always be a lease with it, even after we pay it off, there's always a lease with it, and right now, it's a decent amount per month. Brunswick, Brunswick's reached out a few times, nothing, they're, they'd probably be my second choice if we went to it, I just haven't heard from the rep in a while.
Oh my gosh, I hear these names, and I have PTSD, trust me, I'm like, if I never hear them again, I would be too soon, anyway.
Say they're all pretty comparable in price, I mean, they're within, you know, fifty grand of each other, so, looks like off of this, so, yeah.
So what are our options there, Darryl?
So as far as like, funding possibilities?
Well, I was gonna let Darryl talk, that's why I said...
Actually, Evelyn might be able to speak, because we spoke about it, but this is a city-owned facility, and it's a quality of life, so my go-to would be 105. And we have the money in that fund.
That's the only place we can pull it from?
It'd probably have to be general fund.
I like the 105 idea, it's our asset, that's where we should be investing that money first. And these will last?
These will last thirty years, almost a lifetime, and twenty-four, twenty-four-seven tech support, it's the, they're just, like I said, Cubica's just the top-of-the-line with it right now, they, they've run into, their position is fifteen thousand facilities that they're in. They're moving forward, they're just upgrading every, every chance they get, and with this, be a full, full ownership, twenty-four-seven support, two, I believe that's two-year warranty on that one, if I remember correctly. Two-year warranty on parts, and any maintenance that needs to be done on it, and they're, they're actually located fairly close to us also. So they're just in Arizona, they just move forward and come right to us, it's a day trip for them.
I think this will help with kinda your issue with, with business, because our biggest complaints right now are, is the customer experience part of it, because they get on the lane, and something breaks, and they have to move to another lane.
Yeah.
And, so they get frustrated, and they don't wanna play anymore, so they don't come back, but if you have something brand-new, and they have, they have a good experience, they're gonna tell somebody else.
We personally experience that, so yeah, it is, it does get frustrating, because then you've just lost, you've
Yeah, you lose fifteen minutes.
Kinda lost what you just did, yeah.
You lose fifteen minutes.
I'm not a bowler, I just, I'm a watcher, I'm one of those watcher people.
Well, especially league bowlers, they hate it, they, when you're waiting there trying to bowl, it's a pain, and, and if we can get more of those league bowlers to come in, yeah.
So, yeah, so one of the options, does everybody know what Fund 105 is, the LIDA Fund? Okay, I actually think that's a great idea, I think that makes a lot of sense, the money is there, we can use it for that, and we should, this is our asset, we should be investing in that, so. Personally, I think it's a good idea. We shouldn't have to, I mean, you know, to go find the money somewhere else when we have it in that fund, I think the comment was made a few weeks ago, we just wanna get rid of that money, so this is a great way to start, and, and, you know, it's something that the entire community can benefit from, if they choose to, so.
Are we, do we vote tonight, or are we just giving a direction?
No, we're voting, it's act, what does it say? Consider an act upon the approval of bowling lanes upgrades, yeah. Yeah.
Then I'll make a motion that we use Fund 105 to fund the upgrades necessary for the Rocket City Plaza.
Second.
Is that for the Cubica, then?
So I have a...
Is that what we're going with?
Oh, are we gonna go with their recommendation?
I would just, yes, I would motion so.
Can you modify that?
Yeah, I'll modify the motion to approve, say the name.
Cubica.
Cubica, to be used, and to approve the 105 fund to be used for, what's the amount?
I wouldn't put a dollar amount in there, would you?
Don't put a dollar amount?
Yeah, just leave it open.
For whatever repairs required.
So I have a, I have a motion from Commissioner Guthrie to approve, and I'm sorry, but I'm gonna repeat this, because I know there are people watching, to approve using IMG's recommendation of Cubica, and take the funding from Fund 105.
Correct.
Right, okay, do I have a second? A second from Commissioner Robinson, any more discussion?
Do you wanna put a dollar amount cap on that, or, I mean, are they pretty certain that 586 is it?
We're pretty certain.
There won't be any?
Yeah, we, we, we've done some pretty extensive research on the, on all of it, and we're pretty certain it's gonna fall.
Just the way the word, the motion's worded, it's...
Yeah, do we need to cap it at a specific amount?
I'd say like six hundred or six twenty-five, that way, that way there's a little bit...
Not to exceed a certain amount, how much?
So should we modify, modify the motion?
Just to make sure, yeah.
I have no idea what you just said. Okay, so I'll, I'll modify the motion to not to exceed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Six fifty, okay, all right, so I have a motion from Commissioner Guthrie, so, modified it. Cap of six hundred and fifty thousand. Second from Commissioner Robinson, can we put up the vote, please, before I get totally confused, right?
I'm glad you guys ran it back there.
They're easy. So the pins will all just do it differently, but you get it different.
And motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
I'm really, I am totally thrilled that we can do this, I really am, I think this is like...
We appreciate it.
Like the icing on the cake for the family Fun Center, so, yes.
Well, we'll make, we'll make sure it's, it's done right, and we'll make sure it's operating well, and, and we assure you, we're getting the restaurant and bar operations dialed in pretty, pretty well, and that, that thing's almost profitable, and, over these last few months, and then we'll get this bowling lanes profitable for you, and we'll be able to pass along more revenue sharing.
I actually had lunch earlier the other day, I had a good experience, no, I do not believe they knew who... I actually had lunch earlier the other day, I had a good experience, no, I do not believe they knew who I was, I really just think I had a good experience. I've seen some other people not say the same, but I, I think, I think I'm with you, it's, it's, I'm sorry, but good help's just hard to find sometimes, so...
You know, you can walk in the best restaurant in the world and have a bad experience from time to time, so it's, it's just how it goes, so...
We had a great experience.
With constant training, when we can get people to do their job better, you know, every day, if somebody has a bad day, it's just trying to get them to, to check that attitude at the door, and then try and get better at real ones, and...
Overall, though, I, people are really happy with what's going on, so, thank you for that.
We'll continue to improve, and we'll work hard to make sure it happens, and, and I know Johnny's had, had some struggles here and there to keep, keep things going, and then he's worked, put in a lot of hours, he's, I think this past, I looked at his time card closing out yesterday, and he had 145 hours in there, so, um, we've been, we've been, uh, he's been working hard to get it done, so, um, we'll keep doing it, so, thank you guys, we appreciate it.
Well, now you get new lanes, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to item 12, let me get situated here. Thank you. Appointments to boards and committees. We have a current vacancy on the airport zoning board, we have another one coming up, um, for applicants who live within the city limits. We do have a new application by Lee Shoals. It was received, and his current term, hi, him, his, right? Yes, sir, that's right. I don't even know why I said that, okay, his current term, sorry, sorry, it's been a long day. Current term expires on, uh, January 23rd, if reappointed, this would be his fourth term on the airport zoning board. If nobody has any objections, I'm gonna go ahead and appoint him to that. We do have two vacant, two current vacancies for county-appointed representatives on the library board, and six current, this one, I don't get this, six current vacancies for applicants who live within the city limits for the Senior Volunteer Programs Advisory Council. And that is all I have, so with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move them, um, second.
Say, who was it? Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I knew that. A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald, can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven zero, we are adjourned, thank you.